Here's where I want to start. I want, I want to get right, right to it. Give me your attack line on Michael Rainville. This is a hard hitting question. Are you going to use this to attack your opponent?
Well, I do use that as part of my safety plan.
So Conrad, I, I worry that we came in too hot on this episode with the attacks on Michael Rainville, but I think we can also end the episode with an attack on Michael Rainville.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've, I've, I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the Wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
The bass and midtones go into the microphone.
Okay, Conrad, nobody's ever tried to teach me how to use the microphone on my own podcast before, so can you go over that again? What am I supposed to do? You said you were hearing some lip smack.
We're recording right now, so I'm not going to say anything.
I like to start the, here, here's some professional advice from me to you. I like to start the show with some, some banter. And you telling me how to speak into the microphone on my own podcast would make a good way to, to lead into the episode. So why don't you want to do that?
Cause now we're recording and I, yeah, anyway.
You're going nowhere as a candidate, Conrad, nowhere with that attitude. This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, and we're doing Award Three episode, another candidate episode. I hate talking to candidates because it can get a little repetitive. I don't know if you enjoy listening to candidate episodes. Tell me if you do, because that, that will be motivation for me to keep going. We're talking to Conrad Zbikowski, who's running for city council in Minneapolis in Ward Three. Welcome to the podcast.
Thank you for having me on.
I, I wonder where to start with you, Conrad, because we know each other a little bit. You were the Wedge Live cameraman for the median episode. You helped me do that. And we did the Lake Chipotle thing together. So we have some personal history and some affection for each other. So here's where I want to start. I want, I want to get right, right to it. Give me your attack line on Michael Rainville, cause I, I, I don't like him very much. I think he's been bad for the city. I think he's an embarrassment to the city. So I'm wondering what, what do you, and maybe I should let you introduce yourself before you go into the negative, the negative attack. That's kind of where I wanted to start is tell me why you're running and, you know, what, what do we have to say about Michael Rainville?
Yeah. So again, I'm Conrad. I'm running for Minneapolis City Council in Ward Three. And I think my journey to running for office really started with voting for Michael Rainville on my ballot. As you might remember, he said, and I quote, "I'm a build, build, build candidate in terms of building more housing." And so I thought, well, you know, I'll rank you on my ballot. I think that we need more housing in the city of Minneapolis. And housing and zoning and building codes, those are all things that the city council has the most control over. There are legislative decisions that come before the planning commission, and then if they're appealed, they come before council committee or council. And so that's where he could make the most impact on housing. And then once he did get a seat on the planning commission, we saw from the very beginning that he did not live up to what he had promised. And in fact, he was a very anti-building, anti-housing candidate, our council member, that is. And while he was on the planning commission, he voted against the majority of housing projects that were up for discussion in Ward Three before he abruptly left the planning commission earlier this year in 2023.
But there's more, right? There's more, because I, just like in the hour or two leading up to this discussion, I'm running through my mind and I'm kind of amazing myself, myself with the things that I've forgotten, or not quite forgotten, but like, I feel like this should be talked about more or should have been talked about more when it happened. It was a big deal over the Fourth of July. The fireworks going up into people's balcony. It was chaos downtown. People, people were shot. And in the aftermath, he blames the Somali community, one Somali community in particular. He said, he told an audience the day after it happened, an audience full of white people.
Today at 1:30, I'm going over to the mosque northeast to meet with some Somali elders and tell them that their children can no longer have that type of behavior that they're exhibiting both at the Stoneridge and down in the Milk District. So that's all.
He's going over to a mosque in Northeastern, this is a quote, "to meet with Somali elders and tell them their children can no longer have that kind of behavior." At the same meeting, he bragged about his vote against funding the Office of Violence Prevention. So he responds to the city's failures, not with solutions, but by stoking people's fear and anger. He's repeatedly cast doubt on the findings of the State Department of Human Rights, that MPD engages in a pattern of abusive and discriminatory policing. I just, I feel like, you, you say this on your website about DFL values. I would say Minneapolis values.
Yep.
He is antithetical to Minneapolis values. There was that, you mentioned housing a little bit. There was a Hennepin County Affordable Housing Project where he introduced crime into the discussion, like him, not somebody in the audience, him.
Yep.
He introduced crime as a factor and whether that building should be approved.
And just a comment, are you aware of all the crime that's in plaguing that area? Okay.
I've heard a few, received a few emails and responded to them in the last few weeks.
And I think he'll say, well, I delayed it, but I voted for it in the end anyway. It's not showing leadership to pretend that affordable housing, low income housing causes crime. That's the attack lines you should be making. This is a terr, he's a terrible person. I don't like to say that. Say people are terrible people in politics, but you can say that about Michael Rainville. It's an embarrassment to the city. So feel free to use any of that. I'm glad to get off that off my chest.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that, you know, we can have an open discussion about that because that's what I've been having with the 700 or more people that I've been talking to as part of this campaign. You know, we started this campaign on November 10th, which as of this recording is exactly three months ago. In that time, we've talked to over 700 people. And people do tell me about the July 4th fireworks, and they tell me about being in that room when the council member made those remarks. And other people tell me that that's not the first time he's said stuff like that in terms of, you know, things that he've said, as you mentioned, on housing or other intersections of these, of these issues. And so I think on the July 4th situation itself, the city of Minneapolis canceled the fireworks. I'm told because they didn't have the money for the fireworks and so they're trying to cut the budget and save on fireworks. And so instead we had police overtime because, you know, July 4th is the number one day for illegal fireworks in the state of Minnesota. When I say illegal, I mean the commercial fireworks that people get from elsewhere and then fire off in Minneapolis that are dangerous, that should not be fired off in, you know, an urban area.
So the, the city's line on the fireworks is who, who could have expected there would be fireworks on the Fourth of July when the Fourth of July falls on a weekday? Who, who could have anticipated there would be fireworks in the street when the Fourth of July falls on a weekday?
Well, I guess people don't celebrate holidays after Monday through Friday.
Would you be able to anticipate fireworks on a weekday if, let's say you're elected and the Fourth of July happens to fall on a weekday? Will you be anticipating fireworks?
So I would hope that there are city fireworks, because I think that when the city has a fireworks show that is safe, that is licensed and over the water of the Mississippi River, that brings, you know, tens of thousands of people to downtown and has a good atmosphere that is positive and has the safety services available, including, you know, EMS and things like that in case something happens. But the reality is that on any given, you know, weekday or weekend, that late night shift has about a quarter of the staffing for MPD as it did before the pandemic. Because we've had so many, you know, people leave and then also people are doing off duty overtime with private businesses that pay much more than the city will provide.
Or do you have a solution for that, the, the staffing thing? Do you have a staffing position?
Yeah. So I have a nine-point safety plan that you, you know, were referencing on my web today. And part of it is, of course, there's kind of two things that are true at the same time. On the one hand, residents and visitors have infamously had very negative and deadly consequences with the Minneapolis Police Department. And there is a lot of need for, you know, a reimagining, a reform, whatever word you want to use for that. On the other hand, we have lost about 300 officers since the pandemic started. And there's a lot that went into that, but you know, we are where we are now. And residents that I talk to on the doors, they tell me, you know, horror stories of where they needed safety services. They needed police and they couldn't get it in a timely manner that, you know, all of us should expect. So for example, I was door knocking in the North Loop and there was a young man who used to bartend in Uptown and there was an assault at his bar. This happens nearly every day in Minneapolis assaults, right? And so somebody was bleeding on the ground and they called 911. And it took officers over 90 minutes to show up from the initial 911 call. I was talking with a worker, a union worker who works in downtown Minneapolis. He lives in public housing. So, you know, that's, that's, you know, run by the city. And there was somebody who was having an episode who was trying to break into his apartment. He calls 911. Well, is the door working? Well, yeah, the door is working. Well, thankfully it was still working two hours later when police finally showed up and arrested the person who was trying to break in. And so, I mean, I don't know what to say, but like, yes, we need to, we need to improve transparency and oversight and have independent oversight of MPD. But we also need to actually take steps to improve the level of safety service here in Minneapolis. Because a lot of people, when they call 911, when they want, you know, if they have a heart attack or if they have a fire, we've had recent fires in, you know, apartment buildings and things like that. These are all safety services that people rely on. So as part of my safety plan, I have increasing starting pay for new officers so that it's actually a market wage in terms of not being at the bottom of the metro area in terms of wages, but higher up so that people actually want to work for MPD. And then also having a residency bonus so that people can afford to live in the city of Minneapolis and be a part of the community that they wish to serve.
Two, $2,000 Conrad, residency bonus for police.
$2,000.
That's kind of, that's too generous.
Well, it's a do what.
$2,000 a month. That's a lot of money.
That's what the LA.
And I, I don't know, I, I've seen, so there, there's a lot of talk about how like you have the cops live in the community, you'll get better, better outcomes. I don't know if that's established by evidence. Like it feels intuitive that that would fix things, just like, well, if we bring diversity to our police departments, that, that will make things better. Not, not always, but, and so what is your response to the criticism about whether it's even effective to have officers living in a community? Because people say it all the time, but does that, is that something that works?
You know, I have a nine-point safety plan that starts with respecting constitutional rights, that has oversight, that has trying to hire more officers, which residents are saying they really want. And at least I have a nine-point plan, really from both the incumbent council member and from the mayor. I haven't seen a whole lot of a plan on actually what they're going to do to improve safety. Now, yes, they have created the Office of Community Safety with Cedric Alexander, and they've hired a new police chief who has said some nice things in terms of off-duty overtime and things like that when he's been on the speaking circuit. But in terms of an actual plan that, you know, you can go to the city website and, you know, know what the plan is, I haven't seen that. So I'm glad that recently the mayor came out with five bullet points of what he wants to work on. But I think we need more than that, especially on the police, because the mayor is the one that, you know, that leads the police at the end of the day.
You know what I want to see from you, Conrad? Here, here's my advice to you.
Yeah.
Something, a piece that's missing from, and I, of course, all my advice is related to how to attack Michael Rainville. So he, there is audio of him using, using his vote against the Office of Violence Prevention, which I assume is like a thing the vast majority of people agree on, non-controversial, fund the Office of Violence Prevention. It's not getting a lot of money, but like, at least we can all say we support it. It's those alternatives that people will nod towards and go like, yeah, I'm pro-police, but I'm also supporting these alternatives. He used as an applause line at that, that meeting the day after the Fourth of July that he voted against funding the Office of Violence Prevention. I don't know how on the day after chaos downtown, he decides the scapegoat for that isn't like the police department, Mayor Frye is leader of the police. No, it's the Office of Violence Prevention and their, their few million dollars that they're receiving. Are you going to use that? This is a hard hitting question. Are you going to use this to attack your opponent?
Well, I do use that as part of my safety plan.
But do you say like he bragged about voting against funding the Office of Violence Prevention? I didn't see that.
I haven't, I haven't attacked the incumbent on every single line of attack because I think people who I talk to on the doors are more interested in what my plans are. And that's why I have developed a nine-point safety plan. That's why I've developed a six-point housing plan. That's why I developed an accessible mobility plan that goes from sidewalks to bikeways to transit and more. And at least as of this recording, the incumbent has no vision for the future on his website. And it's kind of like, I mean, I'm trying to do the best I can to be a council member for 2024, you know, for, you know, coming into office, and that means having a vision for myself. And I don't see necessarily attacking every, you know, quote or something like that is being the best way to be a leader for Ward Three. I will hold him accountable on claims that he makes, and we do that every day. But at the same time, I think that looking towards the future and having a bold vision for a better future for Ward Three is what people want.
Well, I still think it's powerful that he brags about voting against funding the Office of Violence Prevention.
Good question. So I made an email so I can send it to the mayor. The question is, where is the Office of Violence Prevention? So I voted in this February to not fund them because they have not done a report from last year yet. But yet, brother, other council members, no, that, that happened. They are not, we hold the police accountable. We need to hold the Office of Violence Prevention accountable.
So I'm sorry for skipping ahead to the part where I want to attack Michael Rainville. I don't know if that was the right way to begin the episode, but I was just, I was ready to go. Let's go back to the beginning for softer questions to humanize Conrad. Why are you running for office? And please, please don't regurgitate everything from your website and your nine-point plan and your six-point plan and your this point plan and your that point plan. Tell me what issue, like what got you started down the path of being a political person? Like I, I can think, for me, it's like urban issues, it's housing and transportation, things that affect my daily life that got me really motivated to make a change when it comes to city politics? So is there a particular issue for you that really got you started down the path of being a politically active person?
I think my introduction to politics happened in 2012. I was a political intern at the state senate and I was in a political science internship credit as a young person back then. And it was actually funny, I was, because I was kind of a little bit apolitical, I worked for a Democratic senator, of course, but I was a little bit apolitical and I was planning to go to the Republican caucus that year because I wanted to write about something interesting for my, my paper, my political science internship credit paper. And the LA looked at me and she was like, wait, what? No, you're going to the DFL caucus. So I went to the DFL caucus and had no problem becoming a delegate. And then I learned at the convention that I was actually contested and I stayed for the whole thing and the, the rest is history.
I'm not motivated by this story, Conrad. You told me a story about the DFL process. I don't, I don't, you're not touching my heart. You, you didn't like say I made a difference in someone's life. You're like, well, someone told me to go to this DFL thing. You need a better, you need a better story. You could have anticipated this question because I asked it to other candidates and I'm pretty sure you watch those episodes.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I mean, I have a, I, I have been involved with politics for a long time. I think with the 2013 campaign and 2017 campaign, housing was something that really, that I cared about a lot. I want, I want more people to have homes. It's as simple as that. More people to have homes. And I can see.
Let me ask it this way. What's the last thing you emailed your council member about? And I know your council member is Michael Rainville. Maybe you hesitate to email him since you're his opponent. But what are, what are you contacting the city about lately?
Well, I do contact the city for, the people reach out to me on door knocks and phone calls and things like that where they ask me about issues that, that they kind of want help on. They want somebody who can be a navigator on. And so actually recently I had somebody who, I'm not going to say exactly where they live, but they live along rail tracks, right? And so the diesel engine rail are idling by their house and they have to keep their windows closed because it just becomes just nauseous, right? All this diesel fumes coming into your house right by the rail tracks. And so they said that there was a federal agency that had been helpful in the past. And so I reached out for that in the way that they wanted to and just gave them some help on that. I also had somebody who was interested in help from the city where they lived in a building and somebody was using the ADA parking, the accessibility parking. They're using it for contractors and construction workers and things like that. The building management was doing that. And so I helped them navigate that issue and things like that. So that's, that's how I am, in a sense, kind of using those city services and those federal services to help navigate for people. For myself, the last issue that I remember that I contacted the Ward Three office on was a sidewalk issue where XL Energy had ripped up this whole sidewalk and never fixed it back again in a whole six months. And with a little bit of pressure from the city, they finally redid the sidewalk as if it was brand new.
So what are people up in arms about? Is it still crime? Are people, when you talk to random people as you're campaigning, what are like the top three issues that people are exercised about?
So when I do door knocking, when I do door knocking, the number one thing I hear is, I don't know what a top issue is. I just moved here less than six months ago, you know, a month ago, two months ago, something like that. The second thing is public safety and the third thing is housing, specifically rent. And if somebody had a rent increase recently, overall rents went really down during the early part of the pandemic as people moved out of the urban core towards more suburban places in terms of lowering your cost of housing if you don't have to work downtown. But then rents have actually gone up again to some degree, depending on the location in Ward Three. And so people have noticed that and maybe overall they're, you know, doing pretty good, especially considering inflation right now is somewhere around eight percent, six percent, depending on the metric of inflation you're using. So having your rents go up by five percent doesn't necessarily feel as bad, but of course we can do better.
So the, when the first thing you're hearing as you're talking to voters, door knocking, is I just moved here, I don't know what my top issue is? Or here's a philosophical question. Are you possibly contacting the wrong universe of people? Does your, do you have your campaign strategy correct? Because when you talk about the caucus and convention process, the likelihood that someone who just moved here and doesn't know what their top issue is, will find themselves showing up to a DFL caucus and becoming a delegate for Conrad and making a difference is very low. So, or you could make the argument that, hey, we need to bring new people in this process. Michael Rainville can't be moved out of his job unless we bring new people into the process. Therefore I must dedicate all of my campaign time towards bringing new people in. Why, where, where do you land on that? It sounds like you're talking to a lot of people who probably won't caucus, won't become delegates.
So we're doing both at the same time. It's, it's not an either or choice, it's a both choice. So on the one hand, we've been doing door knocking since about November 21st. We've been door knocking every week except during the, the winter break there. And we have knocked on over 4,800 doors and we've gotten a lot of data out of that. And then those people are being contacted again on the phone to follow up and, you know, make sure that they are still interested in things like that. And then at the same time, we're also calling a list of people who have been caucus attendees in the past. But I'm doing both at the same time. I'm not just, because some people might say, oh, the recommendation is, you know, make a list of people who have caucused in the last three years or something like that and only call those people or possibly door knock them by driving to each and every one of their houses or something like that. I, I say, no, we're going to reach out to new people, just like we did in 2013, where we reached out to a lot of new people and brought a lot of new people onto the process who are fully, you know, able to participate in terms of being a resident and a member of the DFL party, but want to help, you know, get a change on the city council.
You say you're, you were collecting data in November of 22, door knocking for a city election that won't happen until November 23. And I wonder if one of the data points you collected was get, get the [bleep] out of my doorway. I don't want you door knocking me. We just had an election. I'm tired of it. Were you irritating people in November of 22, right after the election was over to tell them about city council? You're getting a bunch of people who have no concept of what city politics is. I imagine, did you start any fistfights doing that?
No, no, no. I, I mean, I try to do it in a really positive way. You know, I use my, use my friendly voice and.
It doesn't matter how positive, it doesn't matter how positive you are about that. People are going to be irritated.
There was one person who, so I had, we, one of the volunteers had left literature at his door in terms of, you know, putting it up into a little spindle and then putting it into the door handle. And that really upset him to the point that he came down to the lobby and was like, how dare you? And ripped it up in front of us. It's like, okay, have a nice day. You know, I mean, I, all I'm trying to do is help you be more powerful in your city government in terms of being informed about, about what's going on, about what affects your rent, what affects your, what affects your streets, your sidewalks, indirectly your metro transit, things like that in terms of the transit lanes and all those kinds of things. And so I think centering it on issues that are important to people, like we said about public safety or we said about housing. When you center, you know, the city on what's important to the residents right in front of you, right there at the door, people appreciate that. And it's strange because I'm, I'm a little bit of a Minnesotan in that I, I don't like people invading my personal space. But people will want to shake your hand and that's like, okay, you, you know that you've, you've made a difference there today.
So I'm going to skip over the whole police accountability section that I usually do because you strike me as appropriately skeptical of MPD's performance and police accountability. So if you want to hear Conrad's positions on all those things, go to the website or contact him because I'm not going to have that conversation again with a whole new candidate when I'm pretty sure of the kind of answers I'm going to get. So we're skipping over that, Conrad. Are you happy?
Well, I'm always happy to answer any questions that people have and even if we don't agree.
Okay. Cause I wanted to skip some, to something that we probably can at least have a, a productive back and forth on where maybe we disagree a little bit and it's rent control. And so you have this very pro, like unapologetically pro-housing, I think is the, the phrase you use on the website, which I completely agree with, but. But there's, there's rent control. And, uh, maybe we, we disagree a little bit on this one. I think you're taking too hard of a line. So you, you disagree with the particulars of the work group proposal. Uh, you oppose the idea of it, but why not adjust it, uh, to your liking? Like if you don't like the percentage. If you think it needs an inflation adjuster. Uh, you mentioned how it could lead to, uh, evictions, the policy could lead to evictions. Well, why not pair it with, uh, just cause eviction protections? So it feels like you're saying no entirely to it. Let's do this other thing. Let's, let's rezone. Let's build, build, build. We don't need rent control. Why not adjust, why not, uh, tweak the proposal that was recommended by the work group? Instead of saying, no, we, we shouldn't do it at all.
Well, cuz I think that, um, two things to say to that. One, um, I believe in what I call abundant housing. The idea that housing is easily available to most everybody. Um, and that there's specialized housing depending on if you need supportive services like medication management. Or, you know, other things like that. Um, and then because with that, um, I watched the podcast episode. So thank you for having the, uh, representative from the Framework Five Work Group, um, on the podcast. And in that podcast, uh, they themselves say. Um, that they would expect this policy to lead to less housing built. Um, and that's just something I, 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 I can't agree with a policy that in the end houses less people. What I am for is having.
Did Jennifer Arnold say that?
Uh, yeah, she was talking about, um, she was talking about, I think it was the vacancy de-control or it was some particular policy. With that and kind of applying it overall. And saying that this will, that developers didn't like that. They, they wouldn't wanna build as much housing because they don't have that power or something like that. Um, I don't remember the exact quote and forgive me for not remembering the exact quote from that. But when I heard that, I was like, when we have such a demand for housing, how can we say that? You know, we're going to say yes to less housing. And it has, doesn't have to be a, 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 uh, either or with having more housing for people who can really afford it. Versus more housing for people who can less afford it. We can do both at the same time. In terms of with the current, uh, zoning and, uh, laws that we have right now. We have inclusionary zoning. So that builds a lot of market rate housing. That builds a, a portion that is, uh, inclusionary zoning affordable housing. And yes, that's not affordable for everyone. But it's at least more affordable. Um, and then like you were mentioning with Hennepin County. Hennepin County has been spending over a hundred million dollars on a year, a, a year. At least so far, that was a lot of federal money that is gonna be going away eventually. But they have been spending on more deeply affordable housing. Um, and that would not necess, like rent control doesn't help with that kind of housing necessarily. Cuz it's based on your income and it's, yeah, go ahead.
I got one for you, Conrad. New construction exemption. Boom. I solved it. How about that?
Well, I think if you put Band-Aids upon Band-Aids onto a policy position, but the policy position underlyingly is. Giving an incentive against something, additional Band-Aids aren't gonna help the problem in the end.
What is the incentive against if you give like a, uh, twenty plus year exemption for new housing construction? I don't know what the incentive against new housing construction is there.
Well, it's not against new, well, it'd be not against new construction, then you'd have the problem that. Um, you'd have basically either older buildings not being kept up because. Um, because the, uh, two percent is under the rate of, uh, you know, housing inflation in terms of. The cost of natural gas and in terms of property taxes, all those kinds of things that feed into housing costs. Uh, mortgage rates, things like that.
Then we just get into the details of the policy and what percentage do you think is appropriate? Should there be adjusters for inflation? Should there be exemptions for improvement to the property? Then it becomes a discussion about what the details are and you can be against the three percent, no inflation adjuster. But then you could just come up with whatever level you think is appropriate because. At the, at the heart of this Conrad, you have people who simply. Can't afford a two hundred dollar, if they're paying eight hundred, nine hundred dollars, they can't afford a two, three hundred dollar increase in their rent. That's just, that's gonna force them out of their home and no amount of like rezoning, build, build, build. Is gonna help those people, even though I totally agree that building lots, lots more housing at all income levels. Is necessary to a, a healthy and well-functioning housing market. There are some people who just are not helped by that at all. And like the market is just, it's, people are falling through the cracks. In those circumstances. So what, what do we do for those people? Who can't wait for Hennepin County to come along and like convert a motel. Or some, some project that they probably won't, uh, find a vacancy in.
Well, so I think when you gave that example right there of. A two hundred dollar increase in rent per month on previously eight hundred dollars per month. That's a twenty-five percent increase. And then the example that would be possible then is what the other side of the work group wanted to do. Which I don't remember the number offhand, but it was somewhere around ten or fifteen percent. Um, plus an inflation amount or something like that. So essentially kind of like Minnesota's. Uh, price gouging, uh, rules that have happened from time to time where, um, people can't. Leverage a temporary crunch in something to, uh, you know, kind of take a higher type of price increase.
So did you watch Joe Biden's State of the Union?
I did not watch Joe Biden's State of the Union. I was making calls and talking to, uh, people on the phones.
I, I rarely watch, uh, something like the State of the Union, but I happened to this year. And one of the weirder segments was Joe Biden talking about like hotel fees. Like why? And like airline, like you get to the end of the checkout on a airline website and you find out that, uh. It costs this amount of dollars for all of my family to sit together and like hotels having hundred dollar surcharges you didn't expect. And he's gonna put an end to that. And I feel like the rent control, uh, debate is like a failure of imagination for people who are maybe like. Comfortably housed. And like, there's all these other ways that we regulate the world. To like keep people from coming to a bad end, like losing the home that they live in. And there's the Kira study that shows rents are not actually exceeding. The levels of rent control that we're talking about. Like Minneapolis rents in general are not exceeding a much over three percent anyway. So it seems to me we could find a reasonable percentage to agree on. That stops people from being forced out of their homes and also allows landlords to stay in the business of landlord-ing. Uh, and when you pair that with a new construction exemption. It's, it seems to me we, we can find a way to do this and that's all away for me, of me saying Conrad. Uh, I think, maybe reconsider your policy here. It'd be a great way to show contrast with Michael Rainville. Because I'm, I'm betting he will be very much against any version of rent control.
You know, I come at the issue of housing as somebody who has lived in support of housing before. Um, where we did have, uh. Medication management and things like that. Um, and, uh, that was paid for by, uh. By Minnesota Medical Assistance in terms of Medicaid here in the Minnesota, because. At the time I was basically no income and so, um, as a student and so. I, um. I was able to, uh, get treated and, uh, do better. So I know that there are so many people who need those opportunities. And so that's why I do support investments in housing more people and giving the supportive services that they need. And I don't think that rent control for, you know, every luxury new apartment building. Is the best way to, uh, to do that. Um, and I think the acknowledgement, the public acknowledgement. That rent control will lead to less housing being built. Just shows the, the pressure that is being put on the, the system here where. Yes, we wanna keep rents low, but then we don't wanna have new housing. Well, that, you know. People break the rules. Back in New York when they did rent control and they still do rent control to some extent. Um, there's a lot of, you know, underhanded things that hurt a lot of people. And I would much rather have a situation where we can have a lot of new housing being built. We can have it be subsidized by the developer in terms of inclusionary zoning. Um, and we can have it subsidized by, uh, the society with, uh. Deeply affordable housing that is run by Hennepin County or nonprofits or public housing. On my six-point. Uh, housing plan, I'm in favor of building more public housing and having a property levy to help pay for that. Um, currently with the federal cap and the fact that Minneapolis has had a growing population. We can build up to nine hundred new, uh, homes, uh, apartments, single-family homes, things like that. Uh, of public housing. And recently because of Congresswoman Ilhan Omar and Senator Tina Smith. Uh, federal funding has been approved for eighty-four of those nine hundreds. So there's another. Eight hundred some that we can move forward and build even more. And that's for people, you know, working families, people who need, you know, five bedrooms in a public housing apartment. For their kids and things like that. Um, and for people on very low or even no income.
So Conrad, you talked about controlling rents in luxury apartment buildings. We don't have to do that. We could do the new construction exemption. But please don't respond to that because we have talked for far too long about rent control. Uh, but open your mind Conrad. That's how I'm gonna end the rent control segment. Open your mind to the possibilities. Doesn't have to be somebody else's version of rent control. Tweak it however you want. Just open your mind to it. Do you have any strong feelings about the commercial, uh, the land use rezoning study, which is currently being considered as city hall? Talking about like which uses can be put where like, uh. Where, where can a coffee shop go? Where can a restaurant go? You know, we've, we've handled the basic form of buildings and now we're on to deciding. Where can different types of uses go? Are we too restrictive with commercial zoning in Minneapolis? So there not enough places where people can open a store?
Um, I think we are, yes, I think at least, so yes, we're moving towards a, a new. Minneapolis twenty forty land use rezoning, all that kind of stuff. But at least what currently exists as of February twenty twenty-three is very restrictive. And it leads to kind of weird patterns that might not necessarily appear to most people. But when you look at the zoning map, then it becomes apparent what's going on. And I think, um, one of those examples is, uh, liquor stores, so off-sale liquor stores. Now this of course is something that, uh, most people don't want in their neighborhood and I respect that. Um, but it's also interesting how, uh, lots of portions of northeast Minneapolis. And southeast Minneapolis with Prospect Park, those areas were zoned. Yes, you can have off-sale liquor. And so then all the breweries, when a brewery opens up, they were opening up in the North Loop and Northeast and Southeast and places like that. Uh, where they can do this off-sale liquor and sell their, their wares to elsewhere. Um, and so I think, uh, uh, it was interesting where we had a discussion. Online about, uh, the, uh, North Minneapolis Aldi, uh, closing down here shortly. And, um. I think I'm a true believer in what's called complete neighborhoods and that comes directly from the twenty forty plan. The idea of a complete neighborhood where all your daily essentials are within walking distance of you. And, um, we have that a little bit in downtown where we have the Lunds, the Target, the Trader Joe's and the Whole Foods. Um, you know, kind of a little bit spaced out in downtown. Um, and so it makes it more walkable. But there is a lot of Minneapolis where, um, I was talking with people who live on Broadway Northeast. And, um, they don't have any grocery options that are walkable. There is a bodega that is a couple blocks away. Um, but it's really expensive. There's not any competition to have other kinds of food. So people feel they need to have a car in order to go to the quarry. And to get, you know, their Target and their Cub and things like that. Um, and there's a lot of people from other areas of Minneapolis that go to the quarry too, cuz that's the only place where they can get those essentials.
Yeah, I, I chose where I lived and moved to in Minneapolis based on, uh. One of my first requirements, where am I gonna get food? If I move to this place and I'm not gonna have a car. Where am I gonna buy my food? And so I moved to the wedge. And in those, one of the stories about the Aldi closing in North Minneapolis, the thing they compared it to was, I think they called it like. The uptown area. It wasn't really the uptown area. It was like a triangle. Uh, surrounding the way, it's the wedge triangle, which is not entirely an uptown. And it was showing like all of, all of the grocery stores surrounding the place where I lived. And that was the map. Basically the map that I looked at on Google Maps of, you know, Minneapolis neighborhoods and where I can live. And be able to have the basic essentials of life near to me as a transit user in addition to like. Where do the bus lines go? And so the wedge also, uh, has bus lines on all sides. So that's how I ended up where I am. I don't know how many other people choose where to live like that, but I, I've seen conversations on Reddit. Where people from out of town will be like, I'm moving to Minneapolis, where should I go? And then there, everyone's like, oh, uptown. And then people are like, no, not uptown, the North Loop. And occasionally people will give advice like, well, uh. Wherever you choose, just make sure you check out where the grocery stores are first. And I think that's good advice.
You know, if the grocery store is too far away from you, that can, that, I mean, that can be hazardous. Um, my uncle was the first of my family to move back to Minneapolis and he, uh. Moved downtown where his friend lived. And, um, this was before, uh, this was before the Whole Foods and the Trader Joe's opened. Um, and he didn't like the Target as much. So he liked to do the lawn walk over to Lunds. And crossing the bridge during the winter gets icy and I actually had to bring him to the emergency room because. He fell down on the ice and, uh, was in a lot of pain and, uh, had to get some pain meds for that. But, um, if we have, you know, more complete neighborhoods. Uh, you know, if the, if he had been able to go to the new grocery stores that are a lot closer. Um, you know, that, I mean, it's just kind of like, you shouldn't have to walk across an icy bridge to just go get groceries, you know? Grocery should be as you are in the wedge where they're just a couple blocks away. Um, and just a couple short, you know, crossings, uh, maybe you can bike there, maybe you can walk there. Um, but it's more convenient and then you don't need to have the expense of having a car. Uh, I think, what was the statistic from one of the national statistic things where it's eight hundred dollars a month that people are spending on cars now per month? Uh, in the United States. That's a lot of money. That's, that's rent for the apartment that you were talking about before.
Such a, I don't wanna belabor this, but it's such a quality of life boost when being able to live a couple of minutes walk from a grocery store. Even if you were like a diehard driver. Uh, it's hard to resist not walking to the grocery store and it's also hard to resist like, uh, loving. Loving the experience of not having to climb into a car to, to meet your basic needs. Okay, ci- city's homelessness response Conrad. Uh, how would you grade it? And what, what, what do we need to do to do better?
We did the right thing back in twenty eighteen. Uh, when, uh, the mayor first got elected, uh, and we had the encampment at Hiawatha. Uh, we did the right thing where we opened up a navigation center. And we navigated everybody in that encampment to permanent housing. Um, the community there helped build, uh, new permanent housing. I forget what the name of it was, but as. As I remember, it was on the same site or near that site where the encampment was. And, um, yes, it was a hard thing. Hard things are hard. But we did the right thing and we housed everybody who was at that camp. Now, um, since the pandemic started, yes, the challenge has become much harder. Hard things are hard. Um, but it seems, uh, at least the executive administration has abandoned. Uh, trying to have any sort of navigation with the city of Minneapolis. Now, Hennepin County social workers are doing the best that they can with the situation that they have and the level, level of coordination that they have with the city. Um, and they're trying to house people as I talked about before. Where the Hennepin County is spending over a hundred million dollars a year on, uh, essentially, uh, converting. Uh, hotels and other types of apartments into, uh, permanent housing for kind of a transitional housing from homelessness. Um, and, you know, they're trying to do the mo- the most that they can, but then, you know, we're having these evictions. And I applaud the city council for courageously having that. And I applaud the city council for courageously having that legislative directive to, um. Study the issue, to study overdoses, things like that. Uh, do people who are evicted, are they more likely to have an overdose? Um, and many people in the community say yes, but, you know, let's know that for sure and have it as evidence that we need to have a policy change. Um, have how we address encampments and I myself would like to see. Uh, have navigation services be part of that to help permanently house people. And whatever money we can get from the federal and state government, you know, here in Minnesota, we have. What, a seventeen-plus billion-dollar surplus over three years? How much temporary housing or transitional housing could that pay for? How many Avivo villages could that pay for to make sure that. Our neighbors aren't just left out in the cold when it's negative twenty outside. I mean, the, you know, policy is our values choice.
So Conrad, I, I worry that we came in too hot on this episode with the attacks on Michael Rainville, but I think we can also. Uh, end the episode with an attack on Michael Rainville, who was reported in the Star Tribune, well, like twenty-plus years ago. That he threw a homeless person's, uh, belongings into the Mississippi River. That, that is a real thing reported in the Star Tribune by none other than Steve Brant, who has now, uh, been elected to the Port of Estimant Taxation. Michael Rainville, they thought that was a good thing to do, toss a person's belongings into the Mississippi River. This is a person who hates poor people. Uh, we can say that, Michael Rainville, so, uh, Ward Three. Uh, uh, people are gonna think I'm in the tank for, uh, Conrad here. And it is true, I have some affection for Conrad, but I did it. Conrad, you can attest to this. I advised you not to run. I asked you, I said, Conrad. Please don't run, didn't I?
Uh, you did say that and, um, I think it also must be noted that. In the first six months of twenty twenty-two, um, once we were kind of realizing what kind of council member he was. You know, some people had already said he'd be like that, but, you know, once we know it verifiably, um. I was working to try to recruit people and again and again, I heard that. People don't wanna make that sacrifice in their lives with children, with a newborn, with things, with graduate school, things like that. Um, and so, uh, I was, uh, working in my job and, um. Had the flexibility of being able to, you know, to make this change in my life, uh, to put myself out in public like that. Um, it's, you know, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who have retired from politics. Because they got a lot of hate mail, uh, death threats, things like that. Um, and I go into this work knowing that that kinda stuff can happen. If I could have found somebody else to run, I would have done that. I also wanted to make sure that we could do the best for Ward Three. And we can do so much better. You know, we can do so much better on every issue. Um, and I think with a fresh start, so much more is possible and that's why I'm running.
Well said Conrad, we, we can, as a city and as Ward Three, we can do so much better than Michael Rainville. It's true. Conrad, did you bring any recommendations today? I know you're, you're an avid loyal listener of the podcast and you must have known those was coming. Uh, anything you can recommend to others that will brighten their day?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't remember that this was a question you asked. Um.
Conrad, you don't actually listen to the podcast, do you?
I, I listened to the policy, man.
You pretended that you listened to the podcast.
I listened to other people's answers on.
Would you turn it off at the end? Do you get like, you, you could just make it forty minutes in and then you cut it off? You don't, you don't bother listening. You listen to what a reasonable length podcast would be, which is about forty minutes and you cut out the last twenty-five.
No, I think, uh.
You're not prepared for this at all? Let me give you the, the whole long lead-up to the question to give you time to think about it. Something that makes you happy, that you think other people will enjoy and hopefully it's, uh, well, you go, go, tell us what it is.
So, um, it's no secret. I, I live with bipolar. I lived with depression. And so having connection to other people is really important. It's important for all of our mental health. Um, uh, I was, uh, going along and I saw a billboard recently. Where it says, do you have a brain? Well, you have mental health. And so what I recommend is, um. If you are kind of feeling like, you know, just a little down or something. Spark up a conversation with somebody like, uh, you know, like a, you know, somebody, a cashier or. Your hairstylist or, you know, don't just sit in the hairstylist's chair and not talk to them and things like that. Talk to them. It'll, it'll make you feel good. You learn something about them. I, um, just had a haircut today and, um, I learned that. Uh, the hairstylist, um, uh, had switched schools. Because of, um, the kinda classes and she had a really bad teacher, so she, uh, drove thirty minutes to. Go to, uh, a better public school and, um, she did, uh, you know, A's and B's then, um. And you wouldn't learn that about just random people if you didn't reach out to them. And that's, you know, that's part of what. Um, door knocking, canvassing is all about. It's, uh, giving people the presence of your attention. Giving them, um, you know, your ear and, and your, your attention and. There's so much power in that and it makes us better as a society when we actually listen to people. And when we engage in an honest conversation, even if we don't always agree. You know, I probably don't agree with, you know, most everybody on, you know, some topic. But at least, you know, we can listen to each other and work together on the things that we do agree on. And I always, uh, will try to do that.
Okay, thank you Conrad. Conrad Spakowski is running for city council in Ward Three here in Minneapolis. Uh, when, when are the caucuses Conrad? Is that, that's March something?
Yes, Tuesday, March fourteenth. And then, uh, the Ward Three Convention is on April twenty ninth.
Yeah, is it gonna be virtual or in person in Ward Three?
So in Ward Three, the convention is on Tuesday, March fourteenth and every precinct is in person. Most precincts, at least of this recording, are, are confirmed and finalized, but not all of them are yet. Once they are confirmed and finalized, then you'll hear about it publicly. Um, and then the convention is on Saturday, April twenty ninth. And it is currently booked to be at Los Estrellas, uh, uh, school, uh, at Broadway and University.
Okay, so Minneapolis, whatever ward you're in caucus, March fourteenth and figure out whether it's virtual or in person, where it is. It's a great process. I highly recommend it. Become a delegate. It's not confusing at all, trust me. Uh, and I'm your host, John Edwards. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. Thank you for listening.